I assume they'll text me. He's probably at the studio. I'll text him later. We're live.
Hello.
Good evening, and welcome to the Town of Rockland Board of Selectment meeting for Tuesday, Jan- June 1st, 2021. Please stand and join us in flag of allegiance. Mr. Salkman Ryan, can you start us off?
Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It is also available live online at wrpsrockland.com and within 24 hours via video on demand at youtube.com backslash wrpsrockland. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. First on the agenda, community announcements. Doug?
I have none tonight.
Nothing, okay. Next on the agenda, review and approval of minutes of May 18th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion or I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous, and Ms. Nyman abstaining, and Mr. Ryan's abstaining. Okay, next on the agenda, new business, Plymouth County Advisory Board appointment. Doug?
Thank you, Mike. As the board knows, Mike Mullen is no longer on the Board of Selectmen. And Mike was the town's, the selectman representative to the Executive Board of Plymouth County. So they've asked that we, that you, appoint a different selectman tonight so that that person could attend their upcoming meeting, which will happen shortly. So I put in your packet just the one page that describes the advisory board. I know you're all pretty familiar with it, and with that, I'll just turn it over to you guys.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Nyman.
I'll second that.
Okay, is that, is that, Kara, is that something that you wanted to do?
Yeah, I have some interest in it.
Good, I wasn't leaving it up to her to decide. You were just gonna make it.[152.22][152.22](Laughter).
I do have a lot of good connections in Plymouth County. I know a lot of the other selectmen on the advisory board, too. So I think I'd be a good addition. If anyone else is open and wants to join, you know, feel free, but if no one else wants to.
No, I think you're the perfect, perfect candidate, Park.
I'm all for it as long as, as long as it's something that Kara wants to do and she doesn't feel as though it's kind of being dropped on her by, by others or anybody else. So if you're for it, Kara, then I'm all for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
Thank you, Kara.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ryan.
Okay, next on the agenda, annual reappointments to be continued. Okay, Kara, since I read them last time, you want to just read the reappointments?
Sure. Conservation Commission, three-year term, Deborah Robby. Taxation Committee, Patricia Penny, 30 Center Avenue. Historical Commission, three-year term, Pamela Ryan, 30 George Street. Building Inspector reappointments, local building inspector, John Undis. Alternate, alternate building inspector, Robert Curran. Electrical inspector, James Paul. Electrical inspector, Michael Dutton. Alternate electrical inspector, Nicholas Erner. Gas inspector, William Callahan. Alternate gas inspector, Ed Gizwald. Plumbing inspector, William Callahan. And alternate plumbing inspector, Ed Gizwald.
Make a motion to reappoint?
I want to say, I have a motion or I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and this is for, this will be for a reappointment of all positions, and Rich, if he votes, will not be voting for the taxation committee.
I have to abstain for the taxation committee.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Abstaining on the taxation.
Yep. Okay, next on the agenda, year-end transfers. Biz?
Nice to see you in person, Biz. It has.
What we're doing is the year-end transfers, the share of our letter to the Board of Selectmen as well as to the Finance Committee, to authorize me to go ahead with the year-end transfers and report back at your August meetings because I have to have these done by June, July 15th, but there's always timing issues, and your meeting is in before that. And then the same thing with the Finance Committee. So I'm requesting permission to do the year-end transfers as needed. Right now, I've only got one identified, and that is for $68,548.49, and that is for the snow and ice deficit that we have right now. And that's after we had already done our year-end budget transfer. So I'm just requesting permission, and if the Chair could sign, if you all approve, that'd be wonderful.
I'll make a motion to, to approve, to allow her to, to do the transfers.
I get it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
What a great job is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, summer 2021 special town meeting. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. So this is really intended to be just a very preliminary, kind of heads-up and overview for, for the board, as well as for the public on potentially up to five articles that we may need to have for a upcoming special town meeting. I'll just briefly mention each of them. The first is, I want to stress the word "potentially." Potentially bringing back the floodplain bylaw that did not pass at the recent annual town meeting. In discussions with staff, other experts we've spoken with, officials from the state, officials from the federal government at FEMA, you know, there really are a lot of negative ramifications on the town not passing the floodplain bylaw, both for the 60-plus homeowners in the community that rely on that federally subsidized flood insurance, but also there's a lot of other implications for the town, not being able to receive federal funds, certain federal grants. And this is something that I feel that we likely did not do a good enough job explaining, educating folks, and I think this is something that we would urge the board to reconsider bringing back. So we've had some preliminary discussions with the Chairman of the Planning Board. I know everyone's familiar with this, the rule of thumb about, you generally have to wait two years until you can bring a zoning article back, but if the Planning Board supports it and endorses it in their report, the town may bring it back sooner than two years. So I'm just kind of highlighting this as something we want to consider. Again, it's, it's something that, the main reason being, we feel that we just didn't really do a good enough job, you know, educating and explaining, and certainly answering a lot of questions that were asked at town meeting, so we'd want to do a better job at that if we do bring this forward at a special. Maybe I'll just run through all five quickly, and then if you want to, you know, follow up with any questions, if that's all right, or you can ask now, it's your pleasure.
Or anybody have any questions as to what Doug just spoke about?
So I don't have a question, but I, I agree wholeheartedly. I do think with that night, the emotions were high, and anything that was tied into anything perceived from a zoning perspective was, was, was gonna get voted down. And, and I do agree, I don't think we did a great job of explaining it, because I don't think anyone really anticipated what, what was gonna happen. You know, for the 60 residents that are impacted, you know, for someone who, who has a property in a, in a flood zone, it can be devastating, you know, and, and so those 60 individuals could really be impacted. But I also don't think that the townspeople understand what the other ramifications are as for federal grants, and really how it impacts the, the town overall, but really doesn't impact in any way a majority of the residents, but without this, it can really negatively impact the town and a small percentage of the residents. I just think we need to do a very, very good job of getting the facts out to them beforehand, and maybe even at town meeting, actually get up and have a handout, but kind of go over in detail what, what this means.
I agree, and if I can, Mike, follow up on Rich's point. If I felt that we did the absolute best job we possibly could at town meeting, and we had all the information out there and answered every question as best we could, and it still failed, I wouldn't recommend bringing it back, because, you know, the voters have spoken. But in this instance where I feel like we could have done better in that regard, I feel like voters deserve to get all the information, so. And again, I'm not looking for any votes on any of this tonight.
So what, what, I mean, we've had, we've had a few weeks since town meeting to digest, to adjust the feedback that we've gotten from the residents. What do we think we'll be doing, what, any plans to do things differently this time in order, in the manner in which we present it, in the manner in which we educate the residents prior to town meeting, and as far as even just something as simple as the maps that we have that were available for the residents?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a lot that we could do better this time. I think we could certainly promote.
Public hearing. Simple as that. You just advertise a public hearing, explain exactly what we're gonna do, and another thing we're gonna talk about later on, I want to talk about that when we, when we do the executive session, but, you know, the other thing we hope to do for the town, but I think that we just have to, I don't know, lay it all out there, basically, at a public, at a public hearing so that they can't say what, you know, people get defensive because they weren't part of the decision-making process, if you will. And, you know, I understand the anger with the people, the zoning issues and the 40Bs, and, and that was anti-40B crowd, which, and I don't blame them for being angry about the 40Bs. We dropped the ball. To be honest with you, we dropped the ball. So we gotta pick it back up and put it back into play, and that's what we'll do. I mean, lessons learned by all of us. Quite frankly, it's just a way of life, if you're not, if you, you know, I looked at it as the people of the town of Rockland, 90% of the people are okay with everything we're doing. We present the budget well, we go through a town meeting like it's a knife through butter. We do 100 articles in a night, other towns take four days. So everybody comes down, they're prepared, but we weren't prepared for this. You know, nobody balked at any of the money we spent on anything. Not even, bing, 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 wave, 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 we're all done. Two zoning articles, one's a basically rubber stamp job, which is a field and stream, the stream thing, and the people said, nope. They didn't, they didn't, had no understanding of what we were trying to do, so that's shame on us. Simple as that, and that, you know, something? Lesson learned, that's all. You know, we would all put our shoes back on and wade, wade back in, and then just do it, and next time, have a public hearing. Put it, lay it out in the line, have everybody do it. I know this.
Can I just over and just speak on the issue too?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's, here we go.
He's counsel. So, you know, this was a learning lesson, and I was shocked when I heard what was going on, because I wasn't there. So that's one thing that will also cure. We won't take anything for granted. We did have a public hearing on this floodplain article in front of the Planning Board, and as usually the case, no one attended. No one asked any questions. So from all objective signs, yeah, there was definitely an undercurrent of people that were upset about the shingle mill project. But there was no sign that there would be a problem with respect to this article. And I think it was a part of our educating the public, but also being able to dispel the misinformation that was out there. People thought that a vote against this was a vote against a 40B project. And it, and it couldn't have been further from the truth. There are conservation-related issues on the shingle mill project, but there isn't anything that related to flood insurance that would connect those projects with the floodplain article. So, again, there was misinformation put out there about it. This is an article that goes through routinely in every other location where it's required, and frankly, Rockland's impact isn't large, but for those 60 residents, it's everything in the world. It's $250,000 worth of insurance that's affordable, that you buy, that covers those homes when there's a hurricane, and we get those. And there's flooding caused by a freak rainstorm where we get these 100-year storms all the time, and it covers not only damage to the property, but personal property inside the homes. So it is everything for those people, and I think unfortunately, people wanted to make it seem like it was about something else, that it was more difficult to build something, things like that, and we should be able to dispel that or answer those questions. And the only thing that I suggested, and Doug and I talked about, was actually engaging the people that spoke up at town meeting, because we knew who they were, and, and educating them in particular, because I think if they knew what was really at issue, I think they would support it.
Bob, is there, is there a way to improve the maps?
The maps are given to us by FEMA, and unfortunately, the maps come very late. The maps are revised periodically. I think the only thing we could ever do is really just highlight which properties are eligible for FEMA flood insurance and explain who they are. And are there some requirements that are imposed on those 60 property owners when they want to do something substantial to their house? Yes, there are, but are they, are they the end of the world? They're not. I mean, I live in Marshfield. Marshfield has seven miles of coastline, homes that are built where they probably couldn't be built today on barrier beaches, and that, that federal flood insurance is their lifeline. There were three homes that were knocked down in the, in the storms that occurred about two years ago. One of them, the people just took the money and didn't rebuild and will never rebuild. The town has also been purchasing some of those homes with, under a separate federal program. That's something that we're not eligible to do in Rockland without this federal flood insurance. We can't call a property repetitive loss property and acquire it if it made more sense to buy it rather than give the homeowner a way out, in a way that they may not have any other way out. So those are the types of things I think that we all have to do better, and I have to do better. And, you know, I think engaging the people that had some misinformation is, I think, the critical element, because I do think that they will support it once they understand what it's really all about, and how it's not gonna impact the shingle mill project one way or the other.
So I think one of the things that I'd like to see done is possibly our last selectmen's meeting leading up to special town meeting, maybe we, we do it in a bigger venue, and we review each article for the residents, and anybody that, that wants to show up can attend, and anybody that wants to ask a question as it pertains to any specific article, I'll allow that to happen, and we can give them a full explanation. That way, there's, there's less confusion, to your point, going into town meeting.
And, and you know, not that this is a, a great excuse, but the reality is, it is, this article was routine in most locations. And frankly, had very little debate. You know, the other thing that happens in a lot of other towns is there are, there is a planning staff, and, you know, in Marshall, the planner presents the article, explains the ramifications, and it, it passes, you know, like that, so.
Any further?
This is mandated by the state or the federal government?
Federal government says, in order to main eligibility for homeowners to purchase federally subsidized flood insurance, you have to adopt these maps, and you have to have a bylaw.
But doesn't we already have a bylaw? No?
We had health regulations, which are deemed to be inadequate by the federal government. They're better than nothing, but it's not adequate to protect the interests that they're interested in protecting.
Thanks, Bob.
Anybody?
Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Doug, I just, I just have one question. Have we heard from any of the homeowners that will be affected by this? Have they called town?
I have not heard. The Assistant Town Administrator may have, but I personally have not.
Doug, why don't you go through the next, the next article?
Sure. And this is not in any particular order. If needed, and I stress if needed, we would have a financial article or financial articles. It could be if there's something in the state budget that necessitates updating any appropriations, or if any of the final rules that come out of the Department of Revenue for the federal ARPA funding, the rescue plan funding. The latest, that's just a placeholder. The latest information we have right now, Biz and I don't think will actually need to have an article on that. The latest information from the DOR, and it's not final yet, appears as though they're gonna treat it as a grant, so that won't require an appropriation, but we're still waiting for the, the final rules. Biz is here, she's giving me the nod, that's still the latest information. But if needed, it's kind of a placeholder for financial articles. The third, third item would be a potential open space acquisition, which we'll be talking about later in executive session tonight. That would require a town meeting vote, and there's other, other issues, not issues, there's other angles to this potential open space acquisition. There's certain timeliness issues that we'd have to act on, so we couldn't wait until the next annual town meeting. It would require a special if we'd want to jump on this particular opportunity. The fourth one would be increasing the salaries for our elected department heads. As we recall, the way we did the budget this year, since we had all the union contracts up for negotiations, and none of them were settled at the time we went to town meeting, we created this special wage adjustment account where we had funds set aside to settle all our union contracts. Everything passed at town meeting, so now we'll, as those contracts get settled, we'll be allocating those wage increases amongst all the union and non-union staff. Obviously, the elected department heads are non-union. However, I didn't realize that only town meeting can set the elected officials' compensation, so I can't treat them the way I'm treating every other employee and just allocate that raise to those individuals, so that has to be voted separately, and it would obviously be retroactive. And we should probably talk about that more, because I know in the past, my understanding is the town has appropriated a certain salary, and that salary's been fixed for three years for elected officials. So if, if that's a practice that you want to return to, we could certainly talk about that, but I was trying to keep them in line with, with other department heads. And then the last one is a, a potential Community Preservation Act, affordable housing-related project, which the Assistant Town Administrator is gonna discuss with you at your next meeting in more depth. And just to be clear, this is related to helping an existing rental property that's already in existence, so it wouldn't, not new stock, it's, it's helping something that's already in existence in town. So those are, those are the five articles that we have thus far. I had a meeting this morning with the town moderator just to brainstorm about dates, and his preference is that we, we not hold it in the summer because of turnout concerns. He would prefer, and again, this is just preliminary, early, early fall. He was thinking maybe the second Monday in September as a possible date. So I'm just throwing that out there for all of you to chew on, obviously, that the selectmen set the date. Early on, as we were pursuing some of the financial parts of this potential open space acquisition, we were, I was concerned that we had a very close deadline that we'd have to meet to hold town meeting, to have votes to be available, make ourselves available for certain types of funding. That's not the case. There's ways that we can handle that and still be in full compliance, so we don't, we can have it, the special town meeting in September and still meet all our other deadlines. And I also spoke with the moderator, just kind of like what you did, Mike, about ways to get information out to the public and communicate before town meeting, and he also had some thoughts, so he can communicate those with you later. So that's, that's where I'm at now. I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. If you have any other comments, you can feel free to pepper me now, or, you know, we'll probably have this on every agenda for the next several meetings until we really sort out exactly what and exactly when.
Anybody have any further discussion?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, other than the fact, I, I do think any, any meeting, it's after school gets back in session, right? Because the summer, I think, just becomes too difficult, and, you know, it lends to people like, hey, I couldn't be there, so.
And obviously, with the Governor's emergency order expiring on June 15th, you know, there won't be the opportunity to have a lower quorum. That's all gonna be out the window. So we're back to the full minimum quorum of 150 people. So to your point, Rich, we think the fall's better.
Perfect.
That's all I have on that.
Okay, moving on. Billboard proposals, recommended selectmen review criteria.
So I included in your packet, we, the map and the zoning bylaw for our billboard overlay zoning district, which is a corridor along the highway. And interestingly, in the, in the town zoning bylaw, it indicates that the town can only have one billboard, double-sided. That's right in the, right in the zoning bylaw on the noted as page 39796, number seven at the top. There shall be no more than one billboard, double-sided, in the Route 3 corridor sign overlay district. And interestingly, we just received simultaneously two proposals. One proposal is from, is from a private entity but working through the state, because the billboard would be located on, on part of the state highway layout and land that Mast Dot, in an effort to raise revenues, put out an RFP to lease, long-term lease their land specifically for the purpose of a billboard. So it's a private proposer, but it's on, it's part of an overall state, state project specifically for this purpose. The other proposal is on, and that's on the, I'll call it the Home Depot side of Route 3. The other proposal is on the other side of Route 3, right at the town line on the end of Accord, I think it's Accord.
Atwood Park.
Park Drive. And that is not on the state highway layout, that's completely on, on private land. So I wanted to just discuss tonight, a suggestion I have for some criteria that we could agree on to give to both proposers, to have a fair and transparent process, and I would suggest having them come in, because timing is an issue for both of them. They do need to get moving. And I, I've taken quite a bit of time over these last several weeks, going back and forth with each of them, to make sure I have enough information to know that they are legitimate and they, they meet all minimum criteria. So I propose that we talk about some of these criteria, which I can briefly mention now, and then have them both come in at the next meeting on the 15th, have them both give a presentation. You can ask them whatever questions you want. Maybe you decide that meeting, maybe you deliberate and decide at a later meeting, but I think it's fair to give them the criteria ahead of time. So in no particular order, the, the five things that I would recommend you adopt as the criteria would be the impact on any abutters nearby the, the site, the location, the impact on abutters. The second would be the operator's qualifications, their reputation and their financial standing. The third would be what the plan for the proposer would be for the billboard into the future, because as we know, billboards used to be big pieces of paper that were glued on, and now they're electronic, and they can change quickly, or there could, you know, so not only is, is it a description of what their billboard is they're proposing right now, but what would that look like five years from now, 10 years from now?
And if it is an electronic sign that's changing, how, how often is it changing? What's the impact from the lighting?
What's the next technology after that? Is there something new that's gonna happen? The fourth item would be price, because pursuant to our bylaw, there is an impact fee that it, that's required to be negotiated with a host community agreement, so price. And then the last one is sort of an interesting one. Given that one of the proposers is through the Mass Department of Transportation and another one is not, I think a good question is, does the board feel that a state, a project associated with a state, should that get preference or not? Should they get sort of extra points or not? And the reason I bring that up is because when the state DOT is bringing in their lease revenue, what they're telling me is that all that revenue is gonna go in to their funds that ultimately get churned back into local road and infrastructure projects. So an argument could be made, you know, that project is gonna generate more funds for regional infrastructure and transportation in town, whereas a private project across the highway is just gonna go to that particular landowner and is not gonna come back and help our road network. So I think you could make a good argument either way, that maybe they get bonus points. I'm, I'm sure that other, that other group on the other side of the highway would argue, no, that's not, not appropriate, not fair, but I'm just throwing that out there for discussion. Those are the five things I thought of in, in talking with, you know, Bob and Jen and others, and I'm open to any other ideas any of you may have. Hopefully, that, that makes some sense. I just wanted to try to be transparent with both, with both proposers before they come in.
Well, I think the thought process when, when this was done, and why it was limited to one, was, I think the thought was always on the other side of the highway, off of Atwood Pond Park. I don't think there was ever a thought of, because it was state property, I don't think it ever, really, really thought about on the other side.
Well, it's funny, when, actually, when it came through, yeah, the, the initial proposal was gonna be on top of the old.
The Kent's, uh, Capitol Land Building.
Yeah, it was just now called the Nissan. So that was the initial proposal, and there, there were no residential abutters. So that was the initial proposal, and there were no residential abutters within, you know.
Yeah, there were no abutters on that side, whatever, that was kind of what I thought was back then.
So there's no impact on the residents at that point. Unfortunately, that deal fell apart.
Right.
And we have these two now that, you know, might impact the residents. So, yeah, I mean, I think Doug, all the points you came up with were good things to consider.
Absolutely.
Can I just add, Mike, I neglected to mention one thing, which is, we're only talking about the criteria you would use to select the one that you would want to enter in a host community agreement. Whoever is selected, they still have to go through a full special permit process with the zoning board of appeals.
Correct.
So there's, you know, there'd be public hearings and all that. So I just didn't want you to think that you're the only entity that would be reviewing.
We're a small, we're a very small portion of it.
Right.
With the host agreement, where they have to go through zoning and everything else.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, moving on. Other new business, not reasonably anticipated, Doug?
No, I have none.
Okay. Okay, number five, old business, COVID-19 state reopening and impact on public meetings. Doug?
Yep, so I'm not going to go through and, you know, repeat what everybody is familiar with from watching the news and hearing the governor's press releases. But as it relates to town operations, you know, town hall had already been open. Originally, it was by appointment only, and then we did fully reopen with greeters in the front, and we managed, you know, the traffic in the hallways with one-way flow, and made sure everybody wore a mask, and we made sure that there wasn't overcrowding in any departments. So now with where we're at with the volume of vaccines and the governor lifting all the restrictions, we've continued, we've been consistent all along. We followed the guidance from the CDC and from the state DPH, and we're continuing to do that now. So we are, we are fully reopened, we're meeting in person, and it's those public meetings that I think is really the biggest impact on all of our operations. So the restrictions were lifted May 29th, and the governor's emergency order expires on June 15th. So up until June 15th, boards and committees can continue to meet fully by Zoom or any other remote technology like they had been under those emergency orders. But unless there's new legislation passed at the state legislature, that all disappears after June 15th. The governor has filed some legislation to allow either a period of time of transition or some type of permanent additional flexibility, but I just want to stress for the public that that's not passed into law yet. So, you know, we had been recording and streaming online, you know, every meeting to be able to provide public access, but once we're back to in-person meetings, WRPS just doesn't have the staff or the manpower to be able to televise every single meeting. So they're, they'll be going back to the core meetings that they've televised in the past, the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, et cetera. So if the public's going to want to see other types of smaller committee meetings, they'll have to show up in person like they did before. So I really do think that the public meeting aspect of it's probably, you know, one of the most significant changes to our operations. And it'll be, now that everyone's had a taste of the remote meetings, it's just going to be very interesting to see what the state does. The pre-COVID rule was for any remote participation, you had to have a physical quorum present to open a meeting in person, but if one or two people happened to be, you know, traveling, they could remote in. But you could never have the entire board be remote like we could before. So it'll be interesting to see if the state, you know, will amend the open meeting law accordingly. I shared with you in my packet the information I pushed out to all the staff as we were preparing for the reopening, I'm not going to go through it, but I feel proud of everything we've accomplished as a town, both, you know, police, fire, Board of Health, and everything they've done, public safety-wise, as well as just every department being able to deliver services and adapting throughout this time, and now here we are without masks. It was relatively crowded today in town hall, but it was, it was good, you know. I'd say probably a third of the public that came in were wearing masks, even though, you know, they weren't required to. I think you may have seen the TV monitor, we just parroting the guidance from the state DPH, which is that if you're not vaccinated, it's advised or recommended that you wear a mask, but there's no vaccine passports and there's no vaccine police, you know, at the door. But everybody was, I think, pleased to be back in the building, and I was, I was just happy with how we've been able to get through this. And I want to thank all our staff from top to bottom for everything they did. That's really all I had on the reopening, unless you have any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, confirmed summer meeting schedule. Doug?
Sure, so we have in the packet the preliminary schedule that we shared with you earlier in the year, and I just wanted to confirm that the summer dates. What we have in there now is Tuesday, July 13th and Tuesday, August 10th. It certainly doesn't matter to me, whatever you want to do, but I just thought it'd be helpful, given that it's already June, for you guys to lock that in 100% if those are the dates that are still good for you guys.
Anybody have any questions on these? Any concerns?
I don't have any. Looks good.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on, and so we'll do with those dates. Okay, next on the agenda, other old business not reasonably anticipated, Doug?
I have none.
Okay. Number six, town administrators' report and correspondence. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. I have just three items to mention tonight. The first is, as I was going through the Canavahna Marijuana Dispensaries Host Community Agreement, I was looking at the provision that requires them to donate $25,000 for education and prevention programs. And it's up to the board and the town to direct where those go. And the host community agreements also reference consulting with the chief of police, you know, given that we're talking about money derived from marijuana sales, and, you know, there should be a connection per the host community agreement for, I'm going to get the exact words here, drug abuse prevention and treatment, education programs, local food banks and/or local veterans organizations. Those are the general categories. We don't think the local food pantry in Rockland is actually in need of the funding right now, but in talking to the chief and the Assistant Town Administrator, did a little bit of work, what we're going to recommend in this first year, because again, this is an annual thing for each of the dispensaries, would be to have the funding go toward a combination of Rockland Cares and the High Point Treatment Center, and they work very closely together. And I don't have the exact split right now, but my hunch would be, most of it would go toward the High Point Treatment Center for all the programs and services that they deliver, with some of the funding going toward Rockland Cares. And as I'm sure you all know, there's been a lot of talk in the legislature, a lot of scrutiny over host community agreements because of what happened in Fault River, and just concerns about what these funds are used for, and is there really a nexus to, you know, to marijuana? So personally, I'd recommend these two groups in the first year, because it's just a direct relationship of, you know, drug treatment, drug abuse prevention. So that would be our recommendation. I didn't, I didn't want to give that green light to the dispensary without confirming that with you. And I don't know, they need a formal vote, but a consensus.
I got a question. There's a lot of talk on television now about cannabis delivery companies. Are they going to be allowed to operate now, town, without a license?
No, they would need to have a host community agreement.
They have to license from the town of Rockland, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, could the people that already have a license start a drive?
A delivery, I mean, they would need to amend.
But they would have to, but they have to just apply, I mean, it's.
They may be required to deliver if someone is not able to get there and it's a medical necessity.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want somebody, you know, from Braintree, somebody calls up a guy in Braintree and has him deliver it to Rockland. I mean, can you do that?
That's possible. They can do that.
Oh, that's all right.
If they have a license in another town, they can deliver it to a private resident. It's just a matter of licensed facility within the town of Rockland, can't go delivering without license from the board.
I believe they're allowed to distribute to other communities that allow recreational marijuana.
Yep.
So I think the short answer to your point there is yes, absolutely, if it's licensed, you know, to, yes.
No, I just want to make sure that if it's going to be allowed, that our people who, you know, that came through the proper process and through us to get licensed, the first crack at the people in Rockland, anyway.
Again.
So that, again, so I, again, I don't want, you know, some guy calls up a number in Boston, but the guy who's really got the stuff lives somewhere close to here, and he's just picking it out of his house and bringing it down there. Is it going to, you know, I don't care, but, you know, if you come here, you got to go into a sterilized building, stand in line, blah, 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 and there, you don't. So how do we know, you know, who's regulating that?
By the way, that's the argument that the retailers are making to protect their investments.
I don't blame them. I don't blame them, because that's, you know, seems to me, it's a, somebody's buddy decided, hey, well, you know, how can we get in on this? And I just, it just, to me, it's a way around the community, the host community agreement. You know, I mean, I don't know, I just.
But my focus on, for tonight, I mean, and that's a whole other discussion which we could bring, is really just making sure that you were comfortable with a combination of Rockland, Rockland Cares and the High Point Treatment Center. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah. I think it seems reasonable, but I would like to, at some point, see what the split would be.
Yeah, that was my concern, too.
Do you have a suggestion, or, I mean, I'm open to?
No, no, I mean, what are we talking, 25,000?
So the total is 25. I know for a fact, because we've checked, that High Point could easily use that entire amount.
Sure.
And, but they'll be happy with whatever portion we would, we would give them.
That's, that's per dispensary, correct?
Correct, yep. Yeah.
That's in addition to, I think, the money, right?
Yep, so that's, that was voluntary, just to be very clear, this was completely voluntary on the part of the dispensary, it was not a requirement.
Right.
And that's in addition to the 3% that they pay us per the host community agreement, which is also separate from the taxes that they pay.
Yeah, the 3% state.
Right.
And that's based on the two dispensaries that are currently open?
So right now, we're, this is only for the one that we're talking about. The other dispensary that's open has a similar provision, but they've opened more recently, so they haven't, we haven't gotten that far along yet. I mean, it could be a split, Mike, of maybe 20,005. I just, you know, that's something we could, but I'm, again, I'm open for input if you have a specific direction on it.
So to be clear, they decide that, the split, or?
No, we do.
We essentially do? Oh, okay.
And if, and if, you know what, if this is something you want to chew on some more and vote for in the next meeting, that's fine. All right, why don't we do that then? So we'll, I'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting. The next two are interesting. So Senator Keenan, we've been in discussions with his new chief of staff, and we were able to request an FY22 budget amendment of $50,000, which we've requested to help us with manhole and catch basin structure replacements. And we asked for that specifically because we met with the highway, water and sewer superintendents to ask them, you know, if we had a limited amount of money, like $50,000, what would best benefit all of you? And that's something that, you know, it's helpful all the way around. You know, to the extent we're fixing, you know, manhole covers and catch basins, that's less inflow and infiltration going into the sewer plant, it's helpful for drainage for the, you know, for the highway department, et cetera. So that has actually now been officially included as a budget amendment, so hopefully that'll get signed into law. So I want to thank Senator Keenan for his efforts on that. And then lastly, we have two letters for Mike, for the chairman, to sign tonight. Jen has been working very hard on the One Stop for Growth program through the state. So the state is now kind of having this central portal for all their, all their grant applications. And the two, the two things in particular that Jen has been working on, one is for the Estes property, which I know you're all very familiar with, and this would seek, I think it's over $200,000 in Brownfield's funding, to help us with a final assessment and some final remediation work. We do have a receiver in place, and they do have a signed offer from a developer, but this last bit of work is kind of what's holding up the ability to move that property. So that would be a great catch if we can, if we can hit that grant. And then secondly, working with the water department on the Myers Ave Water Treatment Plant capacity upgrades. And I don't have the exact, I don't have the exact dollar figure in front of me, but they're both really worthwhile projects. Jen's done a bunch of work on that. So we have letters for you to sign, just to support that effort. And that's all I have for my report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Doug. All right, number seven, selectmen's comments, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the board of selectmen, but the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Bennie?
My only comment is, it certainly feels good to be back up here after, I don't know, whatever, it's been 16 months, and looking forward to continuing.
Thank you, Rich. Ms. Needham?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to see the board in person, and I also extend my hellos to those watching on RPS or online. I was traveling on Monday and wasn't able to attend the ceremony, but wanted to thank Veterans Agent Tim White and the Rockland Allied Veterans Council for organizing the Memorial Day ceremony. And I was told that it was also Jeff Nigerian and John Melville made sure all of the flags and markers were in place in honor of all who, whom have served. I just wanted to extend my thank you. I also wanted to give a quick shout-out to the organizing committee of last week's prom. You talk about a year of overcoming adversity. I saw the photos online of the beautiful tent, and also a special shout-out to the Rockland Bargain Center and all of those who put together their time, their effort to make sure our kids had a really special night. It was a really crazy year, and it looks like, it looks like they all did a really great job. And Rockland's always been a place, a town, full of heart, and when you have times like that, it really exemplifies that. So I just wanted to give a little shout-out to the, all who organized such a great night for our kids.
Thank you, Tiffany. Selectman Ryan?
Welcome back, everyone. It's beautiful to be here, see faces again. Tiffany, could you look down here so I could recognize you without your mask?
There I am.
So you might recognize her on the street now, when we go walking by and say hello. And it's good for everybody to be that way. On this Saturday coming up, we're having the annual Rockland Fishing Derby is back for grade school kids from kindergarten to sixth grade. I'm not sure of the hours, but I believe it's going to be about 8:00 to 11:00 on that morning, and Tony Maggern and the Kiwanis will be there, and along with the Bite Me Bay Company boys who help weigh the fish and do all the hook work. And a special thanks out to R. Stevens Computer Services, whose donations are going to help with the prizes, and Dave Bernash, your neighborhood insurance agent, who also donated funds so that the kids could all get some brand-new fishing rods and prizes and et cetera. Should be a good time, we're looking forward to it. Hope everybody comes out, and hopefully the weather will be good, it's supposed to be 90. So bring the fishing rods, bring your own bait, and let's have a good time. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Vice Chairman Nyman?
I do not have any comments tonight, but it's great to see everyone again as well.
Thank you, Karen.
I just want to, you know, echo what my colleague said, it's great to be back in person. It's been a difficult 18 months, I think, for all of us, but I think we've gone through it, and being back in person, it's a little different running a meeting with people in the room. It's usually just me sitting here looking at a screen. I also want to congratulate the graduating senior class, who graduates this Friday from Rockland High. It'll be great for them to be able to have an in-person graduation with all their friends and family on Friday night. So with that, I will entertain a motion to enter executive session to review and approve of executive session minutes of April 20, 2021, and May 4, 2021, for purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, New England Police Benevolent Association Incorporated Local 65. Purpose number six, to consider the purchase and exchange lease or value of real property MAP 82-R116. Enter into executive session to reconvene after.
I'll make that motion. Thanks, Mike.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
From motion and a second, all those in favor, this will be a roll call vote. Selectman Bennie?
Yes.
Selectman Needham?
Yes.
Selectman Ryan?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
And myself. Okay, thank you.
We'll be training.
Just coming back from executive session. We met to discuss, I don't know what we met to discuss. In executive session, we discussed purpose number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, New England Police Benevolent Association Incorporated Local 65. Doug?
Thank you, Mike. We wanted to report out to the general public that the board has voted to adopt a memorandum of agreement with the New England Police Benevolent Association, that is, with the Police Patrol Union, an MOU which the union has already ratified. And what we are doing is a one-year deal, one year specifically in recognition of the financial uncertainty that we've been in under COVID, and it's a very straightforward 2% COLA, nothing else of any substance, nothing complicated. And I want to, I want to thank the. And I want to, want to thank the union for all their cooperation and understanding the situation that the town's in, so we're just reporting that out as an action item for